Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order. We have the prayer and the pledge by Councilman David Broussard.
This might be the last time, so our Father, Wharton Heaven, I will be thy name, Thy kingdom come. Thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and give us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us, and we do not have to temptation, but deliver us from evil.
I plead to the heavens, to the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit, to make America and to renew the covenant of which it stands, one nation, and God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mayor Protem Ricky Goncalo, Councilmember Brooke Markot here, Councilmember Marlon Lewis.
Here.
Councilmember David Broussard.
Yeah.
Councilmember Deidre Ledbetter, Councilmember DeeDee Johnson-Reed.
Here.
Councilmember Dan Doll.
Yeah.
Any comment cards? No comment cards, but this time I asked you to put your phone on silent or spark rate or something. And we will move on to item two A. Madam clerk?
Acceptance of the minutes, regular meeting of August sixth, twenty twenty-four, which were published on August fourteenth, twenty twenty-four.
I need a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Councilwoman DeeDee Johnson-Reed and a second by Councilwoman Brooke Markot. Is there any discussion of our August sixth meeting minutes? None? Please vote your machines. Very much. Item three A.
Crystal Beyonce to announce her candidacy for New Iberia City Councilman, representing District Five.
Good afternoon. I'm not going to keep myself long because there's a lot of events going on tonight that I know a couple of my friends and family is trying to get to. First, I want to say good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, that is not here, and council members. Some of you was at the forum last night, so some of the things I will say is a repeat, but they're truthful and they're about me. I am the daughter of the late Donald Beyonce and Catherine Morris and Lieutenant Morris. I am a New Iberia raised and born. I have two sons. Both are God-fearing, intelligent young men. One is twenty, one is twelve, and I do have a fur baby that is five. With me is my family and my support group. If you look at those that are here, we are very diversified. If diversity was a person, you are looking at it right now. One of the biggest things about myself is that I enjoy bridging gaps with organizations and community activities. I was employed with the city of New Iberia for twenty-plus years. I started off as a summer camp director at the age of eighteen, moved up to supervisor of the facility, and then I became the program coordinator, which I resigned last year from. Resigning was one of the hardest things that I ever had to do because I love parks and recreation, but it took me on a path to somewhere that I think I was needed, and that was working with juveniles, and I was in the juvenile system. In that system, I got to understand poverty from parents' point of view and children's point of view. One day I got on my knees and I asked God, I said, "Show me a way and a path that you would like to place my feet that I have never been on." And then I received a telephone call that Ms. DeeDee was not seeking reelection. That is a hard job to fill that you have done, Ms. DeeDee. You did excellent. One of my models is to continue the progress, and that is working with everyone in every district, not just District Five. Like I said, looking at my family, my support system, and myself, we are not only getting myself if I'm elected, but we will also be getting my support group and family. And that is it. Thank y'all so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Item four A.
Special Ordinance Number twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, thirty-two, an ordinance amending the budget for the HUD Section Eight voucher program.
I need a motion to open this public hearing.
Motion.
Second.
Councilman David Broussard, Councilwoman DeeDee Johnson-Reed, anyone from the public to speak on this item? Hearing seen no one. I need a motion to close.
Motion.
Councilman David Broussard, Councilwoman DeeDee Johnson-Reed, now we'll vote on the main motion, and this is simple. It's more families, so more cash for more families.
Motion.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Brooke Markot and a second by Councilwoman Marlon Lewis. Thank y'all. Any discussion on this item?
It's a good thing.
It is. It is. I mean, the program's growing, and affordable housing is one of our big needs, so keep them pumping. Anybody else? Then I'd ask you to vote your machines. Thank you very much. Five A.
Resolution Number twenty-four, one oh three, a resolution approving change order number three for Phase Three of the Bayou Tesh Museum Project, FPNC Number fifty, ML one seventeen oh two, and authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documentation in connection therewith.
This is some money that was left in the bid that we hadn't utilized yet, so it's not an overrun of any kind. Uh, DeeDee, you want to tell us about it?
Yeah, sure. Like the mayor mentioned, this was because the project was under budget, so we had a surplus available in the project's overall budget, and the project is at a point where we would like to add additional scope in to complete it as much as possible. And that scope would include some breakroom cabinetry that we originally value engineered, as well as some exhibit lighting for the second floor to help provide their sufficient lighting needs for the exhibits. Any questions?
Yes, ma'am.
So, once we spend this additional twenty-three thousand, is there any money left in the budget to do anything else, or are we completed?
That would be all of the capital outlay funding for actually this whole Phase One, Two, and Three.
Okay, so is there any more requests coming as far as things that you guys would like to add in scope?
I've had discussions with the museum group about the items that were left off the original project, and they're looking into grants and other funding sources to determine how they can add these line item, you know, scope items back into the project, so.
Okay.
Just like they furnish all of the exhibits of the interior, they furnish all the employees, they run the day-to-day. So, we had a meeting and kind of said, "This money was allocated for your project, but all the other stuff is not in that scope." So, I think they really realized we have to go try to find some money.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that this wasn't something we're going to come back and have to take out of the general fund because we want to continue doing the work.
Right.
We absolutely want to finish the work, but
Yes.
we need to find other funding for it.
Yes.
Right. And this building will be state fire marshal approved with an occupancy, you know, close to three hundred people. All the spaces will be usable, so it's really a lot of add-on items or things just to kind of enhance the performance of the building or a little bit better functionality, but not critical to the overall function.
And so this could not, we could wait, you know, maybe a couple more years before we start adding those things in the scope? Okay, cool.
Yes, because we have other projects.
Yes.
Yes, agreed. Yes, sir.
Got a question. This is for Resolution twenty-four dash one oh three. Why the resolution right here to have B yard construction and want to change all of what they got?
That's a mistake.
Oh.
Yeah, we'll just have to put. No, no, thank you. Anybody else? And I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Oh, I'm sorry. We didn't do that.
Okay.
So move.
Thank you. Motion by Councilman Dan Doll and a second by Councilwoman Marlon Lewis. Sorry for that. I said, yeah, yeah, I'm a little thrown off. Y'all behave.
Y'all doing a great job, man, with downtown. I just can't wait till y'all complete with everything, stay in both of it, so I can do my first staycation. I'm gonna do that staycation in Iberia, New Iberia. We got a lot to see here.
Yes, sir, we do.
We do. So, please vote your machines. Thank you very much. Thanks for catching me. Thank you. Five B.
Resolution twenty-four, one oh four, a resolution authorizing the mayor to negotiate and execute an intergovernmental agreement for school resource officers bind between the city of New Iberia, Iberia Parish School Board, and New Iberia Police Department.
This is our SRO contract with the school board. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Marlon Lewis and a second by Councilwoman Brooke Markot. Is there any discussion on this item?
Just one question. Are these officers, I mean, I know the work hours are during the school day, so these are officers that are just dedicated to the school?
Yes.
They don't work for us during other times of the day?
No, they are, and at senior high, it's year-round. There's maybe one or two months that they do some training and some other things. And we have three right now, but one will drop off, and a school Anderson is going to be relocating.
Right.
So, in the future, we'll just have two. She's retiring, but, no, ma'am, so that this covers them, and this is our contract for those officers.
Okay, so I'm assuming they have special skills because they said, I mean, I was reading.
Yes, not anybody can be an SRO officer, and they have to go through special training, you know, to get there.
Yeah, because it says that they do some education as well, so.
Right, they do.
Okay, all right, cool.
Anybody else? Then I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Great. Five C.
Resolution Number twenty-four, one oh five, a resolution declaring certain equipment as surplus property and further authorizing the disposal of same in accordance with city policy and state law.
This is a plotter that can't be fixed, that it's taken up space, and we'd like to get rid of it, and this is the cumbersome procedure we have to go through. So, do I have a motion?
Motion. Second.
Councilwoman DeeDee Johnson-Reed and Councilwoman Brooke Markot, is there any discussion about a broken plotter that can't be repaired?
A plotter?
Plotter, yes.
What is a plotter?
Yeah, think of it as a giant printer. It does plans, it does, we use it for GIS mapping, we use it to print out twenty-four by thirty-six, but it can't be fixed.
When DeeDee said, "Yeah," I figured it was something in the IT world, something in the computer world.
No, no.
And it's probably very, very old.
Oh, my God.
Technology has gone past.
That's what the problem is. You can't even find the parts.
Right, exactly.
So, any other discussion? Then please vote your machines so I can throw it away. I mean, surpluses. Thank you very much. Item six A.
Introduction of Ordinance Number twenty twenty-four, twenty-three, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to negotiate and execute an agreement bind between the city of New Iberia and Evangeline Little League related to the hosting of their sports seasons at the New Iberia Pepperplex and setting for public hearing on September third, twenty twenty-four.
This is our contract. The next one will follow. One is for Evangeline Little League, the other one is for Iberia Soccer Association, and this is our contract where we get paid per child, you know, as they utilize it. It's seventeen fifty a kid. But we have operated for our first year, so this will get us to where we both have contracts and everybody's on the same page.
So, I have a couple of questions.
Yeah, well, let's do our motion, and then, so I just want to tell you what it was. So, do I have a motion?
Second.
Councilwoman Brooke Markot and Councilman Dan Doll. Now open the floor for questions. Yes, ma'am.
So, when we first started talking about spending the money on the Pepperplex, and I think we probably bought five million dollars in, we talked about making sure that these, that some of the leagues were reaching out to the kids in, you know, the West End, also downtown. I'm just trying to figure out, what's the percentage of the African-American kids are having access to this facility? And are we meeting the goal? Because we agreed to do this so that every kid would be able to play at this facility, because we're spending a lot of money on it.
Agreed. In our first year, we've picked up over a hundred more kids. I don't have the demographics, but I can get them. So, the success, you know, and I want to grow more, but the immediate success is by turfing the fields and fixing the place up and getting it where it functions, we picked up a hundred kids in one year. So, I want that to continue. I think this coming year, actually, we've spent a little over four million dollars. We have another two-point-five million to invest, plus another two-hundred-and-fifty thousand for the road, okay, which is supposed to happen pretty soon. It gives us a way out to the light and keeps us safe. Right. With those investments coming, in this year's budget that comes in November, I put some money that we could start promoting, and in part of my promotions, not only do I want to promote it to other communities, to utilize it, to be overflow for the big boys. I just want to be Broussard Youngfield's little brother on this. They have thirty, forty million-dollar ballparks. We don't, okay? But we could do the overflow teams and pick up some, you know, some money and some revenue and some quality of life. In doing that, when we market to them, I kind of realized we need to market to ourselves.
Right.
Okay? And that's kind of the case. You know, I went to the debates last night. There are many things that if we marketed to ourselves and showed people really the positive that's going on, you know, sure, we got issues. Every town has its issues. But if we spend a little time marketing internally, I think that that will do a boost for us and show people the positive and the good and the reason that we're here, and the reason so many people want to get elected to come up here and support and work with us is because we do have a lot of positive. We've got some things to work on, too, but, you know, I'm not belittling that. But I think that the marketing piece will help, and I do think that we will pick up all kids. That's my goal. I mean, we are spending a lot of money, and it is a facility that we can be proud of, and it's in our town, so our town needs to use it.
Yeah, and I know that we have talked about in the past that we have some transportation issues in certain parts, and so we talked about making sure that transportation was available to these children so they don't miss out on being able to play at this facility.
Correct.
Because this is where you're going to see travel ball people, coaches coming to recruit. We want.
Us Little League, we could even maybe, these are, we have, we will have contracts with these two leagues. That doesn't mean that, we're not going to bump these leagues. They have been with us and with this facility since its inception. But we could end up with maybe some other leagues. Again, they got to work around our, these are our anchors, okay? It's like a development. It's like, you know, these are the anchor tenants, if you will. But we might even be able to fit in some other league play and some other people that would do nothing but add to it.
Right.
So, all that's coming. The money to, the two-point-five million is a little slower than we thought. We actually thought we'd be under construction now. That has been a little slow coming from the state, but I actually checked on it today. I mean, it is coming.
Okay.
Anybody else? Yes, ma'am.
We definitely need to add on to parking before we do a campaign to add more people.
Well, in that, in the next phase, the parking is coming. That is, we have that new pavilion, we have additional parking around it. We have some other areas of new parking. I feel your pain, because when you go out there, it is chock-a-block. The road is going to help that people can get out quicker and safer and easier, and between games, people can leave sooner, which, you know, that way we can recycle those parking spaces. It's kind of like a restaurant, the table turnover, it's the parking lot turnover, but we need it.
Yeah.
So, agreed.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
I think we need to be lucky that the people that represented us in Baton Rouge gave us those dollars for recreation, because it's hard to get money for recreation. Very hard.
It was very difficult, sir.
Very difficult.
And because everybody wants to do it for infrastructure and other things, but they know we had a need for it. And for the last couple, few years, we've been getting it. I think we got a little bit more to get, but I want to thank them for getting those dollars for. And the city put up a lot of money, no doubt, but it's hard to get money for recreation right now because everybody wanted for infrastructure and that, but we were able to get some, and I want to thank them for letting us get a piece of that pie.
Good point. Anybody else? What's that? Then, oh, then I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you very much. Under the same vein, six B.
Introduction of Ordinance Number twenty twenty-four, twenty-four, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to negotiate and execute an agreement bind between the city of New Iberia and the Iberia Soccer Association related to the hosting of their sports seasons at the New Iberia Pepperplex and setting for public hearing on September third, twenty twenty-four.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Councilman DeeDee Johnson-Reed and Councilman David Broussard, is there any discussion on this item? The rate's the same, and it's a very similar contract.
Same comments for soccer.
Yeah, no, I agree. I agree. Am I good? Please vote your machines. Thank you very much. I'll get those out. Seven A.
Ordinance Number twenty twenty-four, twenty-two, an ordinance denying the request to rezon property located at two oh five Superior Avenue, belonging to Lynn Coco, Weeks Island Rentals LLC, from R three to C one, all as recommended by the New Iberia Zoning Commission.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Councilman Dan Doll and Councilwoman DeeDee Johnson-Reed, is there any discussion? Yes, sir.
I did talk to the owner that was trying to make this happen, and the problem was is that a lot of neighbors came in with letters that didn't want to have it, because to change the zoning, other things came up. It wasn't just for a snowball stand. There's other things that we could not control, the way the city has that zoning. That's just what it is. It's not, we're not against them trying to spin a little business to help, but the way the zoning is, when you open it up, you cannot control what's going on. And we had a lot of opposition in the neighborhood, and the planning and zoning committee is a committee we put together to be not biased, not political, to do what they think's right for the area. And it is in my district, and I talked to the owner about it and just say, "We have to honor what they found and what information came to them." So, that's why, you know, I think we have to honor their wishes.
Okay.
Mind if I ask a question? So, what do you say? We can't control it. What do you mean by that?
Control, I mean, because zoning like this, to C one,
Right.
all kind of things can happen, like twenty-eight different businesses can open there, not just a snowball stand.
So, okay, so you're saying it could be a different business, not just.
Oh, yeah. They got a list.
No, no, I read through it. I just.
It's a bunch of lists of businesses, occupations that can happen there, not just sell snowballs.
If we change it and he decided not to do snowball, he could do something else. Okay, I get it. I get it.
And that's what happens when you live in a city. You do have these zoning requirements to protect the neighborhood. So, it wasn't personally against the business, it's just they'd open it up to other things that could happen.
Okay.
Anybody else? Questions, comments?
I saw the opposition letters.
The neighbors were against it, right?
Yes.
They sent a bunch of letters.
Anybody else? Then I'd ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you very much. Eight A.
Public hearing in action, Resolution Number twenty-four, one oh six, a resolution declaring that the buildings or structures located at seven oh four Ann Street is in a dilapidated and dangerous condition and further authorizing the emergency demolition of the buildings or structures located at this address, and the city of New Iberia shall file a lien in privilege for the cost of demolishing or removing the building or structures against the lot and improvements upon which the building or structure is situated, all as more further, fully provided by a revised statute thirty-three, forty-seven sixty-one, three forty-seven sixty-six.
We'll do the public hearing, see if anybody wants to, if anyone is here about it, and then after that, before we do the motion second, I'll turn it over.
Some of the family that lives next door is here.
Okay, well, that's why I wanted to do the public hearing first.
Okay.
So, we would hear from them before we took action. So, I need a motion to open our public hearing?
Motion. Second.
Councilman DeeDee Johnson-Reed, Councilwoman Brooke Markot, is there anybody in the audience, and I knew there was, to speak on this item?
This is mine.
Come on up, introduce yourself and tell us, you know, what you need to tell us.
Hello, my name's Alaina Smith. This is my grandmother, Lois Brown. She's ninety-one years old.
Cool.
She lives next door to the house that is pictured above. Let me, do you want to speak or you want me to speak? So, we have been asking about this house. It's vacant. We've been asking for it to be torn down. Something needs to happen. She lives alone, you know, it's dangerous. Someone could be hiding in there. It is on Ann Street. There are pests that are around that come out. So, the question is, one, can it be torn down? And then, two, prior to it being torn down, is there going to be something to, I guess, control whatever is in there that's going to come out of there?
Okay.
Right, that was part of the issue.
Right, I understand.
It has actually become a safety hazard. It's become a safety hazard, not only for my mother, but for anyone in the area.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Yes, sir. That's why we're doing it as an emergency and acting on it. We realize it is.
Yeah, and we went by there. Matt and I went by there one morning, and we didn't want to wake you, so we were standing near your carport, but we looked at it and saw that, you know, that wall is probably going to collapse, and it would actually fall on her house.
A road by and look is coming on your house? Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, yes, ma'am. So.
Okay, thank y'all for coming up. I really appreciate it. Anybody else? No one else? Then let's get a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion.
Councilwoman DeeDee Johnson-Reed and who has a second? Councilwoman Marlon Lewis. All right, thank you. Now, we'll go to Matt.
Yeah.
He can come up. Let's get our motion and our second out the way, so I need a motion and a second.
Motion.
Councilwoman DeeDee Johnson-Reed.
Second.
Councilwoman Brooke Markot. All right. Tell us about it, Matt.
Seven oh four Ann, the brick veneer on the, well, the whole, the whole brick veneer is coming apart.
Yeah.
Mostly on the left side, next door to seven oh six, that's the most important part, what you see there. The roof has collapsed in, which is causing the exterior to peel out, and if you go to another pick, you'll see how far it has come out. Maybe you'll get there, I don't know, but it's pretty bad. So, it's, to not cause damage to personal property, we need to remove it and as soon as possible.
Okay, yes, sir.
There you go.
So, is there anybody here who's an owner of the property?
My next question.
No, okay. So, we did post a notice, right? Did we send the marshal out?
Yes, both to the owner's address.
Okay, so we've done more than we have to do to give them notice about this. This is, this is unusual. You know, we have a lot of properties that are bad. This one's bad, bad, and it threatens the one next door, which is why we're doing something unusual here. We don't often do emergency demolitions, but we can do this on twenty-four hours' notice if it's such a threat to the prop, to people or property that it can't wait. So, I think the motion that we have that Laney drafted says it's an unusual emergency or something, right? So, we've got that language in there?
Yeah.
Okay, and he's given, the owner has been given notice of this hearing,
and they have, they have an appeal period of forty-eight hours instead of the usual five days. So, we need to notify them of the decision of the council to get this thing moving.
So that the neighbors know, so if we vote on this tonight, you'll give them notice tomorrow morning that it's been voted on. They have forty-eight hours to do, to do what?
To remedy that situation.
Well, they can't, okay, that's not going to happen.
No, they have forty-eight hours to appeal by filing a suit.
I just want to make sure everybody understands what's going to happen.
Yeah, filing a suit in district court. So, they got to sue us in district court to appeal this, like you have to appeal these things. So, you know, it's a shortened period of time for notice of the, of the hearing, and it's a shortened period of time for the appeal. And after that, if we say it needs to come down immediately, we can get out there and do this immediately. This property did, I think, go up for tax sale, so it's one of our adjudicated properties.
I think it is.
Right. Okay, so forty-eight hours waiting period. So, everybody understands, when do you get prices to tear it down?
Now.
That's what I wanted to say. Don't wait for the forty-eight hours to get the prices. So, you get the price to tear it down.
Now I'm allowed to get.
Once we do this tonight, then you're allowed to get the prices. So, then when forty-eight hours is up and nobody does anything, you can drop the dime to the demo contractor, and he can schedule it and go tear it down. So, it can be that fast, which is really for us lightning speed. We don't do this often. I think we've done one since I've been the mayor. But, I mean, it moves much faster than any other way. Okay, anybody have any questions?
So, does the city have any protocol to stop the critters, as they were saying, from going in anyone else's house? I mean, I really don't know how you would even do that. What kind of critters? Are we talking about raccoons, opossums, that kind of?
All of it, snakes.
Yeah, yeah.
Whoa.
I don't know that we do. I mean, we tear down a lot of stuff. We've never, I mean, that's not in our ordinance, that's not, I don't know. Matt, do you have any experience with chasing critters?
However, I can call around and see if we have some extra traps and maybe get some from the parish. I don't know how that would work.
If we could get some traps, that would be good.
What did we do for the residents on St. Peter's Street? Because remember when we tore that house down at the corner of Corrine?
We just let it rip. Jeff and I went, and there was a dead opossum in the road, and we checked out the damage, but I'm being honest, we just let it rip.
Okay, because I remember the. Close, though. That one didn't have one, like, super close, right?
Right, it wasn't as close as this.
They had a neighbor right behind.
It was pretty close.
It was pretty close. Jeff, we went out there.
There was a livestock over there.
Yeah, yeah.
The residents, I remember them asking us about that because they said that things were coming out of the yard, and they were afraid. I just didn't know we had done something to stop it.
To tell you the truth, we haven't.
Is the.
Yes, sir.
Is the Maori house still on fast track?
It's.
Talking to neighbors, talking to the neighbors today.
Yes.
By, maybe by December at the latest, we'll see.
With the mold and asbestos remediation.
We kept saying that was the next one, top of the list.
That's it.
To come down, so I'm telling them what y'all telling me.
For sure.
Yes, sir.
I talked to a neighbor today about the Maori house, and I talked to Kay Clark about the estate, and I told her we needed their written confirmation that they're going to go under the grant program. Otherwise, we're going to put it in the regular program.
I made it up.
Yeah, but that one's not.
No.
It's not like this.
No, this is bad, and I can tell you, there's probably a lot of rodents that's going to come out of there. I just don't know which way they're going to run. I don't know what we can do to stop them, but.
You think we ought to call some pest control people and see what they suggest?
We could, we could. Why don't we do that? Let's just see. We've never done that, okay, but, I mean, it's an option, so why don't we take that into consideration and call pest control and see if they can help us out?
I mean, we hate to do something.
I mean, I don't want to make anything worse, and I'm just trying to get you where you got your quality of life back.
We don't want to delay it.
And I don't want to delay it, though. I mean, I want it, it's going to get, no offense, unless they appeal and they go through the process, it's going to get ripped quick.
I doubt it.
But, yeah, I don't think they will, and they can't remediate that. I mean, they just can't. At the same time, I don't want to give you new problems, so, yeah, if you don't mind, as you're getting prices, check with pest control and see if there's something they can do.
Can do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
Now, that wall is leaning towards that house?
Yes, yes.
Who owns this?
This is C and G Holdings LLC.
Who is that, like, a mortgage company?
Who knows?
Probably one of those investment companies.
I think they bought tax sale property.
Yeah.
Those people that buy adjudicated property in groups.
Well, no, these guys, they're local, but they bought this at a tax sale, but then they let it go at a tax sale.
Okay.
So it's our- They gave up.
Yeah. Or didn't do anything with it.
So it's on our list?
Okay.
Of many, unfortunately.
It has, yeah.
It's been on our list.
It's been on the list for a long, long time.
This was actually on the batch of the last six we put up.
It was on the list before those brown houses on Hoppin Street.
That's why it was on there, because it's a bad-
Yeah. Okay, anybody else?
Thank you, Matt.
Thank you, Matt. If there's no further discussion, please vote your machines. Thank you. Thank y'all for coming.
Emergency demo, right?
Yeah, yes, kinda, wanted for the record books. All right. Item nine. Hey.
By Betla Straps to present monthly budget to actual report for November first, twenty twenty-three through July thirty-first, twenty twenty-four.
Uh, good evening.
Good evening.
Um, y'all have the copy of the budget to actual report, which represents a period of November first through July thirty-first, which is seventy-five percent of our fiscal year. Um, the general fund budgeted revenues is at thirty-two and a half million. Um, actual to date is sixteen point six million, which is fifty-one percent of our budget. The expenditures, we have a budget of thirty-seven point seven million, and we are at eighteen point four million, which is forty-nine percent of our budget.
Can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
Um, when I look at the police department, the revenue is at fifty-five percent. The expenses, which are also lower, but they're at sixty-eight percent. Is there any reason why we, the revenue is, hasn't caught up yet?
It's, it's a timing difference.
Okay. Okay, all right.
Right.
That's all I, okay, I just, I mean, I look at that budget and it's like, whoa.
Right.
In the end, the expenses, if they, you know, the revenue doesn't get there, we are gonna spend more than we actually have in revenue.
Right, and the, as far as like the operating transfers, I normally do that towards the end of the fiscal year and just, you know, do what's necessary
Okay.
to do the transfers.
Okay, all right, that helps. Thank you.
And we do have some transfers coming.
Okay, cool.
All right, nineteen sixty sales tax fund, we had ten, we budgeted ten and a half million in revenue. We had seven point two million, which is sixty-eight percent of the budget. In expenditures, we have fifteen point four million budgeted, and we had six point one million, which is about forty percent of budget. The reason for that also is the transfers that'll come out at the end of the year.
Okay.
Okay. Pepperplex, we budgeted eight hundred thousand in revenues. We had five hundred fifty-three thousand, which is sixty-nine percent of the budget. We budgeted nine hundred and sixty-four thousand in ex- uh, expenditures. We had two hundred and twenty thousand, which is at twenty-three percent of our budget. The public safety tax, we budgeted four point two million in revenue. We had two point eight million, which is sixty-seven percent of the budget. On expenditures, our budget is four point two million. We're at two point one million, which is fifty percent of the budget. The Highway fourteen TIF, we had three hundred and fifty-five thousand budgeted revenue. We are at two hun- actual is two hundred and twenty-seven thousand, so it's sixty-four percent of the budget. On the expenditures for the Highway fourteen TIF district, we budgeted one point one million in expenditures, and we've only, um, expended one point, uh, a hundred and seventeen hun- one thousand seven hundred, which is point one four percent of the budget, and that's because of the transfers. Okay? Spanish Trail TIF, we budgeted thirty-one thousand in revenue. Actual is twenty-two thousand, which is seventy-two percent of the budget. And on the expenditures, we only budgeted two hundred and eighty-four dollars. Uh, we had a hundred and sixty dollars, which is fifty-six percent of the budget. Parks and Recreation, we budgeted revenues of one point two million. Actual is eight hundred and thirty-one thousand, which is sixty-seven percent of the budget. Expenditures for Parks and Recreation is one point seven million budgeted. We're at, um, one million actual, which is sixty-two percent of our budget. Pepperplex, we budgeted three point nine million in revenue. Actual is four hundred and seventy-one thousand, which is twelve percent, and that's because of the projects.
Okay.
Expenditures, we budgeted three point nine million for Pepperplex. Actual is seven hundred and fifty-four thousand, which is nineteen percent of the budget. Public Works Funds, we budgeted three point two million in revenue. Actual is one point seven million, which is fifty-three percent of our budget. The expenditures for Public Works Fund is three point seven million budgeted, two million actual, which is fifty-five percent of our budget. Garbage Fund, we budgeted four point two million in revenue. Actual is two point nine million, which is sixty-eight percent of the budget. The expenditures for the Garbage Fund is four point three million budgeted, three point one million actual, which is seventy-three percent of our budget. Section eight vouchers, budgeted revenues one point five million. Actual is one point four million, which is ninety-one percent of the budget. The expenditures, we budgeted one point five million. We are at one point four million, which is eighty-eight percent of the budget. And on the wastewater, we budgeted fifteen point three million in revenues. We had three point four million, which is twenty-two percent of our budget. That's also because of projects coming up. The expenditures budgeted for the wastewater is twenty million. We have four point two million, which is twenty-one percent of our budget.
Questions, comments?
You have any questions?
One question.
Yes, sir.
Uh, at the top, we have insurance. I know all the departments of insurance is part of their department. The one that has insurance by itself, you see at the top the three hundred fourteen thousand? What insurance does that cover?
Um, that's...
Cause all the other departments of insurance is part of their department budget, right?
Right.
Yes.
I'd have to look and see what that is.
I don't need it now. You can get back to me on that.
I have it here.
I don't know if it's just City Hall or-
It's the general liability insurance.
General liability.
I was telling Laney, it's the liability.
And some building insurance is in there.
And building?
Yes, a lot of liability. Okay. Thank you. Anybody else?
Mayors, my bet, it's my bet.
Yes, sir.
Are you temporary or full-time with us?
I'm full-time.
She's full-time.
Okay, I wanna make sure, cause the parish lost.
We keeping her, we keeping her. Quit talking, Miss Bruce. Quit talking. Quit, quit talking. We wanna keep her, okay?
I know you're welcome.
Thank you.
Compliment you for what you-
He's permanent.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Yeah, that's it. Thank you very much.
You're welcome, thank you.
Okay, we drop in item ten, it will come back. This is a discussion that, uh, Mayor Lieutenant Ricky Gosland put on about political signs. We're gonna move that to probably the next meeting, if that's okay with everybody. Good, we're good.
On next year.
Then I'll move on to councilman's remarks, and I'll start on Councilwoman Brooke Markcott's side.
Okay, glad to be back. Uh, thanks for holding down the Fort Wallow sick two weeks ago. Appreciate it. Um, it is, uh, an election season for the city, so just make sure you pay attention, uh, watch the forums, get to know the candidates running. Uh, I know the chamber had, uh, a forum last night and another one tonight, and they're posting it to YouTube and Facebook. So just make sure you do your homework before you go vote. Um, also, it reminded me, one of the candidates last night actually said that we need something for the kids to do. I have something for the kids to do. So I have my free garage event, uh, usually in November, and I like to use the kids as volunteers because they need the service hours most of the time for school. If they're in clubs, they have to have service hours. It helps me out tremendously because we do get a lot of donated items now. So if you have a child that needs service hours, or you just want them to have some sort of responsibility and help out, uh, give me a call and we'll set them up. It's gonna be November first through the third, is whenever I'll have the kids over to help set up. And then usually we do a litter pickup during the spring as well. But that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Ms. Brown, you look great, and we're so glad we was there. You just wanted to say you look great. I spoke to her some time in the past about some of this.
Yeah. Glad she's here.
I'm so glad this is happening for y'all, um, and for our community. Mayor, uh, on Sept- and council, if y'all can help, uh, on September the fourteenth, we're doing, Ms. Johnson, another graveyard cleanup at, uh, Saint Matthew, September the sixteenth.
September sixteenth, yeah.
Yeah, that, which is a Saturday.
Yeah.
Uh, we're doing another graveyard cleanup, um, it's, it's from eight o'clock until, probably eight to twelve.
Yeah.
Uh, any group that, uh, wants to come and help out, just show up with, with Weed Eaters lawn equipment and we'll, we'll coordinate from there.
Your food available.
Huh?
We're gonna feed them.
Yeah, we're gonna feed them as well. Uh, again, that's September the sixteenth, that's a Saturday. Uh, also, of course, I'm sure you're gonna touch on it, we have a political, uh, NAACP is sponsoring a, and along with, um, the Deltas.
Yes.
They're sponsoring a, um-
A new chapter push.
A new chapter push as well. We're sponsoring a political forum in the West End Park.
It's on the Sa- excuse me, it's on the Saturday?
And that's on a Saturday, the cleanup.
The cleanup would be the fourteenth.
That's what I thought, the fourteenth.
You told me the sixteenth, okay.
Somebody said the sixteenth.
Dee said it.
Okay.
Sorry.
No problem. No problem. Motion to strike. No, I just wanted to make sure we got, I just wanna make sure we got the right date.
September the fourteenth is the cleanup.
Y'all are so funny.
So, 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 let's just do this, second Saturday in September?
Yeah, there you go.
It is the fourteenth.
It is the fourteenth.
Second Saturday in September, I think.
Yeah, I thought you said sixteen, but maybe you gave it wrong.
Let's not confuse the political forum as well. Political forum is, yes, September. Political forum-
September tenth.
The cleanup, eight o'clock in the morning.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so we wanna try to get, uh, Pelican out there with a thumbstiff.
And please bring your teenagers.
Yeah.
Got something else for them to do. We'll give them service hours, too.
Yeah, that's a good idea. Uh, September the ninth or tenth, Dee Dee?
Ten.
September the tenth is the political forum in the West End Park from six to nine, and we're gonna be doing all of the seats that are up right now, uh, all the city seats, as well as the assessor's seat. It's gonna be a political forum. Come out and support that, uh, meet your candidate. Um, also, oh, man, I'm sorry, I gotta congratulate my daughter, man. My daughter just got graduated from the National Guard. Uh, seventeen-year-old junior going into a senior, she did the split op training, which was new to me, where you can, uh, you know, go in the middle of your junior and senior year, and man, she a soldier now. I was impressed. Seventeen years old, ten weeks of training with thirty-five-year-olds, twenty-five-years-old, I, I was impressed. So that's my congratulations for my child.
Good stuff.
As, after that, I don't think I have anything else.
Thank you, sir.
Pass, don't I?
Okay, great. Yes, ma'am.
So, um, Councilman Lewis announced the, the first two, but I also wanna announce the, uh, Zodico Bingo. That's also gonna be happening on September nineteenth at the West End Park. Uh, and so there're gonna be lots of prizes being given away. You have to register because obviously it's gonna be limited seating, and we wanna make sure that everybody has a seat. And, um, this is gonna be fun. There's gonna be a Zodico band, there's gonna be bingo, there's gonna be food. So please come out and enjoy. It's for seniors, but anybody can come. We really just wanna get the seniors out there and let them have a good time. Um, there'll be dancing, so, you know, you, you got some Zodico music going on, a little dancing going on. And, and if all goes well,
Yep.
we may have, uh, an opportunity for the seniors to tour our new senior center in the park. The mayor's trying to get it ready so that after the event, we can walk over and take a look at it, so people can see what we're gonna be offering.
Even if it's not finished, we can go take a look.
Yeah, just so people know, it's coming. I mean, we've been talking about it, but now they'll get a chance to go and see it.
Let's do it.
So thank you, mayor, for trying to rush everything and get it done. Uh, so that's it for tonight.
Councilman Doyle?
Um, I noticed maybe without discussion, we talked about grass cutting, uh, people thought we were going to cut that grass if we called them, we would go cut that grass. And no, that's not what we're doing. But I, I see more people are not cutting the grass and throwing it in the street.
Right.
I don't know what's the deal, but they're not doing it. So just talking about it sometime helps out.
Yep.
So, thank you, that's it.
Great, that ends councilman's remarks. Uh, I don't have any. Our next meeting is September the third. Do I have any? Oh, whoa, yeah, our business, and one block at a time, right? One block at a time, and our business grants that we have out there. Uh, you can look at them up on, uh, our website. Uh, that closes on Friday.
Okay.
So that is my announcement. Other than that, I'm gonna ask for a motion to adjourn, so we can go to the debates.
Motion.
Motion.
Thank you.